Evening, welcome to the study session of August eighth, twenty twenty-three. Donna, will you roll?
I will. Councilmember Boden.
Here.
Councilmember Sherman.
Here.
Councilmember Gutierrez.
Here.
Mayor Nesko.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Via Zoom.
I'm here.
Thank you. Councilmember McDowell.
Present.
And Councilmember Peterson.
Here.
Thank you, Donna.
You're welcome.
Public Works Director Jay Harris, along with staff from FCS group has information for about water and sewer rate studies.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council Jay Harris, your Public Works Director. So, um, water and sewer rates. So we have the rates that run out this year in twenty twenty-three, and we're looking at adopting the rates probably for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, maybe twenty twenty-six, probably a three, maybe a four-year period. We can decide that later on the exact length of the rates. Um, and so the drivers of the rate primarily are the capital improvement projects, which I met with you at the last study session, and we went over the list of things. Um, those come from the comprehensive plans, a lot of them. Uh, a lot of the day-to-day maintenance projects are in there, but the actual bigger projects are in the comprehensive plan. And, um, you guys, on the fifteenth, I will be bringing you both the water and sewer comprehensive plans to look at for adoption. And, uh, I don't know, they're about that thick. So, uh, I'm gonna have a quiz in the middle of those, and I'll pick a page to see if you guys read it. Okay. So, um, anyways, we got that going on. So we have the, the capital improvement projects. And then, uh, another driver is just debt financing. We have some debt, um, more on wastewater than we do on water. And then another driver of race is just our operations and maintenance, our people and our, our yearly budgets, you know, to keep the water and sewer, uh, systems running. So, um, I, I got to you the, the capital improvement side of it and our maintenance side of it. Um, Brett Armstrong here is gonna talk more about, on our operations and maintenance, how many people we have, generally what do they do, right? I think it's just a good, you know, five minutes, ten minutes, um, max to sort of go over what we do in the sewer and water system, how many people we have. And then after that, we'll queue up FCS group that, uh, has their actual first presentation about their rate study. So Brett.
Yeah, we will, uh, start off with the sewer positions in, uh, in now. And this is kind of a number of due on, uh, first happening levels. So, um, we can turn to page three. This is the positions that we have that are funded and, um, throughout the sewer inflection site. Uh, we have eleven point seven employees. Uh, currently, we have an unfilled position. We're working for budget and we'll figure out how we're filling that.
Brett, how many, uh, operator twos and threes you have? These are people with significant training. You don't, they're not a dime a dozen. They're a little hard to find when they leave. He's been doing a good job bringing the people up at the plants, but I know you're an operator three or you're four, you're four.
So counting myself, we have, uh, and we're listed here, uh, the waste water treatment plant supervisor. He, Chris Orr is a three. We have Lucas Moody, who is our lab supervisor. He's a three. Art Hill is a three, and Yasmin is three. We have Eric Osseth and Donnie Walker. They're working through the technician program. Eric is, uh, got his certification one, and Donnie has worked on that. And then most of the other positions, uh, are in our collection site, so they're in conveyance.
So that's the piping systems in the roadway, storm drainage, uh, is part of it, but and then sewer manholes, latherals, all of that. Uh, one other question I had, so, uh, on the actual plants themselves, um, do both the plants require a level four or?
Or, uh, or right now, our certifications, uh, the main wastewater treatment plant is a level two. And the satellite water recognition plant is a level three. That's just a different type of processes for the water. And then we turn the page forward. A little bit of information about our six thousand, the amount of sewer mainline, forest main, number of manholes, the amount of square connections. And then this is really the expensive part is all the pumps and blowers, the heavy equipment that run the treatment plants and convey the sewage to it. We average about two point three million throughout the year. Summer time flows down towards a million, but with the INI in the rainy season, it jumps up into eighty-four million. So the average here around two point three. And that's for the main wastewater treatment plant. Satellite plant is actually averaging about two point two fifty.
And so, Brett, you've done a lot of INI projects. Your system health, is it aging? Is it getting better? Uh, and what do you think the average system, that's piping system?
Yeah, so the downtown area is pretty, it's all, we have Mesa, Capitol Hill, and Basin by the way, up on Hillcrest. There's still a small section called Basin Four on East Hillcrest that needs to be updated, and then the angle side area and octane area, it's really, I think that that's where we'll be targeting with the new camera thing, things like that. Target some of those areas, some of that thing. So, but yeah, and it's kind of funny because I've been here since the beginning of it all, and they're saying these plants are new. It's, they're twelve years, both of them are ten plus years old. They're not new plants anymore. Parts are wearing, or having to replace, and this, and you do make more maintenance. Uh, page five is a list of wastewater, um, sites. We have the main wastewater treatment plant, water recognition plant, five pump station. Bodyland, Capitol Hill, and Cascade are smaller pump stations, and then the two big pump stations, Front Street and Eagle Park. As well as a spray field that we have to maintain, the biologics building. Uh, we just purchased the future site for the North Shell version of station, so we maintained the grounds up there. Then we have the remaining connections for the state control. And I'm not gonna necessarily go through all these duties, but I'm just trying to kind of give them as a reference on what our staffing is completing. And this will actually become a lot clearer too, and get more specific once the EAM uh, systems, uh, what the work order that, um, that really get you an idea of what we're getting done. Yes, so daily site checks, um, as well as, um, maintenance, lab testing daily, um, and we are staff seven days a week, and we've got a long call personally, um, for wastewater at this point. But yeah, just these are some of the job duties, and then some of the monthly job duties are on the next page with the both the permits, equipment calibration, spell exercising, like QA, QC is a lab testing, keep our accreditation.
Brett, I have a question just a little bit back.
Sure.
So your site checks, what, for instance, tell me what you do at a lift, at the lift station, at a lift station.
So we just go through all of our lift stations, make sure that pumps are in good order, nothing that vandalized, uh.
Do that every day?
Yes.
Okay.
Because we do have a state assistance, but we like to go there and see if somebody's trying to tamper with the facility, we'll get in there. Uh, we do have a lot of, um, garbage removal down on Front Street. And just make sure that our, what we're seeing on the screen is actually less.
Okay, all right.
For yearly, um, most of these duties that I do with the mass treatment, we're reporting all of our, uh, we do the creep samples, that's kind of tied in with stormwater, but we run those samples with the plant too. Biosolids reporting, uh, bridge load, assessment of issues. Air gases, uh, freezing coming in, the INI attracts how much that rain flow affects the plants and the flows, and by accreditation.
So Brett, what happens if you didn't run your lab?
Then we would have to farm out every sample where our permit compliance.
Okay.
And send those out and pay for what else to do with them, and you don't get really tired of yourselves for your process.
What that is, is when things, correct, when things are going wrong, they're doing lab testing to find out why they're going wrong. And I got into that a long time ago, that we went to contract lab testing, and it didn't work out well. Because depending on the testing, they, they are to get back, well, you need to be fine tuning processes on the fly to keep them permit compliance.
And there are a few, uh, for the nature permit that we send out, water management, obviously, and it can vary from a week to a year.
So is that the, you testing the water also in the tanks, in the water towers?
Just in our base stream as well as the end of the.
So the equal eye that was years ago in one of the water tanks, that was?
Yeah, that, that's part of this, this from here, this is going over next, this is water system.
All right.
And we do, um, some testing sort of work.
How often do you have to do that?
Uh, across the nation, we bring it in, uh, through the meter area. So any questions on the sewer? This is the same sort of layout for our wire department. There are budgeted positions and the unbuild position is to have, I think, the security of waters, basically, city area. But here is the, at the, um, certification levels, I'm not quite sure what they hit on, they hit to bed, it was new, that it happened, that Mike, Matt, and Brad, they had their praise. And then that's our water distribution. And, uh, they're all, they're all, for them, but I'm not quite sure who's at what for the fire department. And then we have the operators that, um, do installs. Or right now, we have the AMI project and long with the reading, hopefully, and, uh, all the maintenance on the water system.
Does the fire department have anything to do with the fire hydrants checking them, or is that?
No, uh, we do.
All right.
This is a little bit about the H four is a little bit about the system, seventy miles of water vein, um, I know you're fixing six thousand, six hundred, eight fire hydrants. Four hundred and seventy, or four thousand, seven hundred fifty-four services, six hundred and fifty-nine back. Average damage.
Would you be willing to explain back, backflow? Because I know a lot of people don't understand what that is.
So backflow protection is basically a safety mechanism to keep the city's water system safe from residential, virtual, test group users. Prevents their water, so if they had a line break or some contaminant got into their side, they couldn't come in, generate water system, it stops that.
Thank you. Because we have, yes, furnace, so every year we have to get our backflow checked.
Yeah, and there, there, there's a whole list of, uh, things that could kick in, whether it's a backflow, irrigation, it could be, uh, sewer pump. It could be a soda dispenser, anything that has the possibility to intanginate in cross-connected water system.
Okay.
Page five has a list of the water department's tanks, booster pumps, well sites, uh, PRV stations. And also the water department owns our shop facility down on Front Street, so maybe that, that's.
So the age of the water system is quite a bit older than the sewer system. Uh, the tanks, we just had the inspections done. Did, did you email those out?
Not yet.
Yeah, okay, okay. You'll see those, uh, they're actually pretty good news. You know, there's tanks said nineteen sixties, nineteen seventies, for the majority of them. And, you know, there's a few of them that need some work, but, you know, they're faring okay. Um, got a lot of cast iron water lines, which is older. We use duct wire now. So those are lines that were put in the fifties to, you know, later sixties, seventies. Um, so a lot of our hydrants are older, and so when you go to the, uh, comprehensive plans, they, um, had significant projects for valve replacements, because you gotta shut off sections of the system. Well, if the valves are from the fifties and the sixties, they don't seat well, and so you're shutting off blocks and blocks. You keep going farther and farther out. So anyways, the water utility has quite a bit older assets, the sewer, because of the INI projects, uh, a lot of those assets have been replaced.
Is so, does Pine Street, does that include houses and whatever, or just?
Just our shop.
Just a shop, okay. Anybody see anything different in the water around that area, since the pipes are getting kind of old?
No, uh, there isn't much. Uh, what it is, is cast iron pipes just get more brittle with age. And when we have a break, it's typically during colder weather, really hot weather, and, um, we're seeing more and more cast iron pipe rates. And that's where the valves are important first, so you can shut off that section and, and get a repair on it. And then where you have multiple pairs, it means you, you need to replace that line sooner than later. Um, a lot of the services have been upgraded, uh, to copper or, or PEX. And, uh, so that side of the business is, is doing pretty good, and we're working on the meter side of it right now.
Can you tell me what PRV stands for?
Yeah, that, that's a pressure reducing bolt, and that takes a pressure, uh, from a higher elevation zone and drops it down to a lower elevation zone, so it allows us to connect our tanks together that are at different heights.
And then again, a list of duties, uh, state mannered chlorine samples, water inspection inspections, locates, meter reads, um, meter reading usually about first thirteen days of the month. And hopefully that improves with our AMI, maybe of this, free up employees with that, um, site maintenance, the water, um, probably is the biggest thing that we're in.
That's.
City, uh, so there's a lot of maintenance, knowing and keeping it nice. Backflows a lot. I mean, we have two specific jobs to keep up on all the backflow monitoring. And water quality. Monthly duties are reports to the state, more rain, um, maybe their back tea samples. Another cross check that we do, the backflow protection testing, um, meter reading, door hangers, lock offs, so the water department can get quite busy when you have maintenance projects going, and the door hangers, ons and offs come on, so.
When you test the chlorine or the level in the water, where do you, is there something at the bottom of the water tank that?
When we have it at the well sites, and then, um, we have a few mixed sites around the city, I don't know specifically where they are. We have, we have certain.
Okay.
And then the yearly reporting, um, it goes to the state, cross connection survey, party sufficiency, and, uh, consumption confidence report. Yeah, a lot of, a lot of these reports are making sure the water is safe, and then also making sure that you're not wasting water, maybe, or, and hopefully with this AMI project, we get a real read. We have lead detection, that can get reported on, and so, um, there's we, we've actually improved our system in that, in that over the past ten years, lowering those levels through, and, and having to be. And then operation maintenance. But these can be daily tasks, two yearly tasks, that just going through and it's operation maintenance, and almost preventative maintenance at the same time. Go through and cycle these valves, um, delete detection, take cleaning, try and, uh, do the flushing, keeping our water, you know, so it's not stagnant in its lines, uh.
Is that what they're doing there? When I see the bleeding water down there by the pizza place downtown, sometimes they got water.
Yeah, it could be, it's usually they're hooked up to a fire hydrant with a dispersion thing, and you know, you'll see it, but, um, and, uh, when they're gonna be in that area, they'll build the rain or they're hitting, uh, see some stirred up water. It's not anything that's contaminated, but it could get murky, it's just starting to.
So any questions about operations and maintenance for sewer water now?
Well, I'm really impressed with the amount of things you do every day and monthly and yearly and whatever.
Yeah, there's, oh, no, because of, or is it the rain?
Yeah.
So, uh, next we have, uh, the, uh, great presentation from FCS group, uh, they're here, there's Tommy right there. Good evening.
Hello.
So, do you hear us okay?
Yeah, coming through loud and clear. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Alrighty. I can share my screen and get going on the rate study update presentation. Is that coming through okay?
Yeah.
Yes.
All right. Uh, tonight, we will be talking about two different topics. You know, the first will be, uh, the revenue requirement. And really, when we, you know, use that term, all we're saying is, you know, what does it cost to fund the water utility and the sewer utility? And as mentioned earlier, uh, tonight, you know, that's operating costs, that's your capital costs, debt service on existing loans or bonds. And how does that compare with current rate revenues? And if there's a forecasted gap in expenses and revenues, what, what increases might be needed to close that gap over time? And so we look at, uh, a multi-year period, and then we come back with a comparative monthly rate survey to see where the city's rates are today, where they would be next year with, uh, the proposed rate adjustments. And the second item we talk about tonight is the general facilities charges. So these are different than the monthly rates that all customers pay. These are specifically for, uh, development as it occurs, as they connect to the water and sewer utilities. It's a, a one-time charge that goes towards offsetting, uh, the capital costs of each utility. And we don't have final results, but we have preliminary numbers, and we can share with you, uh, how they compare with your current GFCs, and also how they compare with other, uh, regional and, uh, other jurisdictions across the state in terms of, uh, the total water and sewer GFC through a comparative survey. So the, the general framework for the rate study, you know, we take into account different policy items. On the left there, you can see fiscal policies. These are things like operating reserves, capital reserves, certain requirements related to debt service. It can be a balance of what's appropriate in terms of rate or cash funding versus debt funding. And then, of course, uh, GFCs is an important part of that capital funding strategy. And those all impact, uh, the revenue requirement, which you see there on the right in those green boxes. So when you add it all together, the total revenue requirement takes into account making sure you're funding your fiscal policies, covering your operating and maintenance costs, and then those two bottom ones, capital expenditures and debt service. Now, those are related in terms of, uh, cash. So rate revenue each year, as well as making sure you have enough money, if you need to borrow, to pay for future debt principal and interest. In order to pay for, uh, the water and sewer utility costs, there are monthly rates, and what you see here on the screen, these are specific to single family. And so for the water utility, you can see there's a, a monthly base charge there, sixteen forty-six per month for that smallest meter size. And then depending on how much water usage a typical customer might use, there's incremental, uh, blocks. So the first six hundred cubic feet are charged a lower rate than the next nine hundred cubic feet, and so on and so forth. And then there is that, uh, city utility tax that goes on top of these charges. In the sewer utility, there's a monthly base charge of about fifty-four dollars, and then based on a per cubic foot of water used in a given billing period, uh, there is a charge for that as well. So it gives you a sense of how a typical bill is put together. Over the last three years, we looked at what the actual, uh, inflation has been. These are, uh, June over June inflation numbers for the last three years. So you can see, for example, uh, back in twenty twenty-one, inflation was about five percent. The water rates increased by about ten percent, and sewer rates just under five percent. Uh, whereas in twenty twenty-two, inflation was just over ten percent. You can see water and sewer rates were, uh, well below five percent there. So altogether, over the last three years, you can see that, uh, rate adjustments for the water and sewer utility have not quite kept, kept pace with inflation. So putting it all together, uh, you know, how much revenue is needed, it's funding your reserves, fiscal policies, it's covering your operating and maintenance costs, and then it's funding your new capital projects, whether with rates or making sure you're covering, uh, existing and new debt service if needed. Uh, the next slide will talk about fiscal policies and kind of what they are for each of the city's utilities. Uh, one of these is the operating reserve, just making sure you have enough, uh, in your account to accommodate, you know, the ups and downs of, uh, day-to-day operations. You got, uh, revenue coming in at different times than you're paying your employees, paying for supplies and materials. Uh, so making sure you have enough, uh, in your bank account to cover those ebbs and flows. And consistent with citywide policy, uh, both utilities have a reserve equal to about twenty percent of annual operating expenses. Separate and above that, we're recommending, uh, a capital reserve, uh, to handle any emergency repairs that might come up throughout the year. Could be capital cost overruns for planned capital projects, or if there's a, a local match requirement for some types of grants, you could tap into that reserve as well. And so for the water utility, uh, we're recommending about two percent of your original cost of assets. Sewer utility is a little bit newer in terms of some of the facilities, so not quite recommending as high of a level, but still at that one percent of original cost of assets. And then lastly, debt service coverage. When we put together the revenue requirement for each utility, we're making sure that each utility can cover its debt service obligations, plus a little bit of a buffer, so that, um, you know, when you, after you pay for your operating expenses and debt service, there should be a little bit left over. Gives your, uh, those who give you money in terms of, uh, debt issuers, a little bit more confidence that you'll be able to make your debt payments on time, even if there are some unanticipated. You'll be able to make your debt payments on time, even if there are some unanticipated changes in revenues or expenses. So we'll jump into uh the water utility first and then we'll cover the sewer utility. Uh wanted to spend some time focusing on the capital program that feeds directly into the water utility revenue requirement. Uh in total, the twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-nine capital program is about fifteen million dollars. Those are in today's dollars with inflation, uh we'd expect that to be closer to seventeen million. So on average, about two and a half million dollars escalated to the year of construction. And there's a, a couple of key storage projects in this capital program that will help address uh. Storage deficiencies, which currently are, are limiting growth within the city. And so tha- that's a, a key part of the capital program. You see here in green, a couple of projects. Uh city staff have done a great job at going out and getting grants for a couple of. Actually, the two largest capital projects in this uh six or seven-year window. So that helps offset the cost of the capital program, but the rest would need to be covered through reserves. Rate revenues, uh and then those general facilities charges that we talked about at the beginning of the presentation. Currently in the water utility, there's a, a general facilities charge. That increases by meter size for a typical single-family connection, that would be a one thousand two hundred and sixty dollars. That's for that three-quarter inch meter and then larger meter sizes would scale up from there. The rate forecast assumes that the city would adopt a three thousand dollar, three-quarter inch water meter, general facilities charge for twenty twenty-four. Uh the preliminary numbers suggest a range of three to four thousand dollars would be defensible. And supportable in terms of uh the updated numbers. And just to give you a sense of what this could look like with the, the number of units per year. That were provided to us in terms of a forecast at the current level of your GFC. Two hundred units per year would generate about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year in GFC revenue. While under that three thousand dollar GFC that we're suggesting, that would bring in about six hundred thousand dollars per year. So you can get a sense of uh what types of impact that would mean to adopt that higher GFC. So in total, when you look at that six-year capital program. Funding strategy, about twenty-five percent we're projecting would come from existing reserves as well as rate revenues each year. You see there seventeen percent we're expecting would come from uh general facilities charges. Grants are covering nearly twenty-six percent of the capital projects over the next six years. Uh one part of that pie slice comes from a property sale from earlier this year. That's uh bringing in about eight hundred thousand dollars for the water utility. And then we are projecting to fund the rest of the capital program, about five and a half million dollars in a future loan. A couple of years down the road. So in order to achieve that capital funding strategy, uh we show what we call the revenue requirement in this graphic here. Uh each year, that the stacked bars represent uh the financial obligations of the water utility. In that darker color bar at the bottom, those are the annual operating and maintenance costs based on the adopted budget. Plus some annual inflationary uh adjustments in the future. In the uh green bar, kind of in the middle here, that's your existing debt service obligations for loans already on the books. Just above that and getting larger towards the end here is a new debt service for borrowing. And then anything above that is rate-funded capital coming from rates that can go towards cash funding part of the capital program. So those are the obligations of the utility and you can see here in the solid black line that I'm highlighting. That's current rate revenues at twenty twenty-three rates. So you can see while you are covering your operating and maintenance costs. Uh not quite covering existing debt service, so there is a, a budgeted drawdown of reserves in twenty twenty-three. So in order to sort of keep pace with inflation for operating and maintenance, cover existing debt obligations. And to pay for future capital projects, uh we're suggesting three years of fourteen percent rate increases. Which would adjust annual rate revenues uh per the dotted line here. So that a fourteen percent rate increase, uh what we show here is uh. The percentage rate increase in the top number, a typical monthly single-family bill. And then what that increase is to that monthly bill. So in twenty twenty-four, a fourteen percent rate increase. Would increase a typical water bill from about four to six dollars per month. Up to fifty-two dollars and fifty-four cents in twenty twenty-four, so an increase of about six dollars and fifty cents. After that three-year phase in, we're projecting that rates could uh settle down into that three percent range, starting in twenty twenty-seven. Any questions on the, the water utility before we move into the sewer utility?
No, I just had a question that the capital program, we talked that it wasn't fifteen of the prime of twenty million. There's another five million dollars that were booked out of this report.
Uh based on the upper angle side, the new counts, that actually is pushed out.
Okay.
So the, Jay, correct, I, I brought up the um BFC's. Estimate for completing the reservoir.
Correct, it's uh, it's in there, it's in twenty twenty-seven, uh five million dollars.
Yeah.
Oh. And that uh would, was the bone financing that you saw on that one slide. Um right now it's far enough out that I can't go really get a grant application. I have other grant applications, I'm working on other projects up there, but we'll be looking to try to get a grant for that. But we do need to secure funding for that to continue to allow people to build up there and so. We wanna use rates to finance that, right? Cause that's the only tool we have right now. Cause we don't have the general facilities charges, cause the houses haven't been built yet, right? And so um the rates will fund that if we aren't successful in getting any grants at towards uh all or a portion of that reservoir.
And if we don't get the reservoir built, we don't have homes on that side of town.
We don't have any additional homes, um we can add some with um the two-point-two million dollar project that's in the twenty twenty-four's budget. That's with the two million commerce grant, um we can bring on somewhere around four to five hundred homes. Um with that and get caught up on our reservoir storage deficiencies. Um, oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, you're right, the one point eight million, I was down on the, the next project. But um yes, one point eight million dollar project, that will bring some units online. And to be able to bring on uh more than about four hundred, um we have to go down to that, that five million dollar, dollar project and get that built. Um, so and it all depends, uh you know, home building is one of those things that a lot of people are looking at shunting right now, right? Uh just because of market reasons and um as you know, you know, it can be boom or bust with single-family housing. It can go really good for five years, ten years, and then you can get nothing for a significant period of time, like what happened in the past. Um, so um we need to be prepared to, you know, when the housing wants to come in, that we have uh the, the water services available for them. As swords and, and the most part, we'll need a little, we'll need another well at the end of the plat- planning horizon. Um that's like twenty years out, but uh for now, um we're, need significant reservoir storage projects.
I have a question, a crazy question. Back on slide four, why is there a utility tax on the water utility and utility tax on the sewer? If it's the same bill? Or if it's the same, do you give a project, do different items?
Utility taxes um support the general fund.
Okay. So you, I'm just wondering why that's not a combined utility tax, I mean why it's. There's one on water and there's one on sewer.
Yeah, the two separate utilities, right, the two separate funds are two uh completely separated funds that have to. Operate on their own revenue stream and their own expenses, right? The water, the water fund cannot support the sewer funds or not support the water.
I did have an individual ask why there's two different utility tests.
I don't know why the rates are separate, to tell you the truth.
Different?
Different, sorry.
I don't either.
Yeah, this person was wondering why there were two. So that, I'm glad it came up, okay.
And other, other utilities be paying that as well, like casket natural gas and.
Well, I know there's a utility, but on those, but I'm just thinking it's the same bill that comes out. Two different departments.
Yeah, okay. Oh, I had a question asked me earlier today, which I thought was interesting. They said, we understand that your sewer rates are based off of your water usage. And they said, what about when we're watering our lawns and it's not going directly down a pipe? And I said, well, maybe I'll find out tonight. We have this, we have a seasonal rate.
So we're averaging.
Yeah, we do, we do sewer averaging for the funds and if you have, you can also um to get a sprinkler meter.
Your separate irrigation's good and then you're not paying on that, but Mike probably explained it better, the essentially what happens in May through.
It's June.
June, sorry.
We wanna go, we wanna go to May.
Right, and so we're averaging those bills when you're using what we would consider more average in those late fall and winter months. So that when you are watering your lawn, you don't have an irrigation account that's not going against your, making your sewer bill higher.
Yeah, June, July, August, November, October, or, or.
Winter water consumption, but November, December, January.
November, May.
Like, so basically, whatever you use in the wintertime is what they use for your average for the summer. So if your sewer does not go up, should not go up in the summertime.
Yep.
I know I water.
So a lot of uh. People not watering somewhere.
And then I have a question about slide ten and it says for connections, is that just for new builds? Connection, right?
GFCs. Yeah, under our current policy, if there's an existing meter, then GFCs wouldn't apply unless you increase the size of that meter.
Okay.
Right, but if it's a new, a new meter set, uh the GFCs would apply as well as, well, for both waters, right? You have.
Thank you.
Any other questions about water?
Two things, so one of the two hundred units here in the growth forecast, that's a number for an illustration, correct? That's not any tie to our historical data, that's just to give us an example of what the difference in the GFC rate would look like at that level, correct?
Correct, so what we uh looked at with uh, you know, uh Peacock Bridge, which is now called Olympic Heights, Coffee Creek and Bayview Estates. Three to four years from now, we could depend on the market, be at two hundred units a year. Uh we're gonna obviously ramp up to that very slowly, you know, fifty, one hundred, one fifty. Probably peak somewhere around two hundred units a year for, I don't know how long, cause I, I can't estimate the future. But um pretty typical for that, for this sized city to be in the one hundred to two hundred range. Don't think you were gonna do many more than that and uh it'll be up and down a little bit. But that was for purposes of GFC revenue and uh so GFC revenue, when it comes in, it's not guaranteed funding, right? It does help us with the capital projects for capacity, like a new reservoir or a new well or a new pipeline. But um I can't count on that, I can't, you know, say I got this project planned and I'm hopeful the building's gonna happen, right? I mean, I need the money in the bank, right?
Can, can you uh explain on slide eleven, borrowing five point five million grants, four point five? Did you add those, are those? Will those be added together in the amount of money we need?
Yeah, that, that's in um, uh the, the revenue strategy, so the borrowing was for the reservoir uh project up in Angle Side.
Okay.
Um so we can uh it accommodate any future growth up there, um and finish that out. And then the grants have already been secured, um and then also the, the property sale was included with that.
I got it.
Okay.
And then on slide twelve, um we're looking at the rate funded capital, how is that calculated? Cause it looks like it starts off much lower and then peaks at about what, half a million a year?
Yeah, I can take that, Jay.
Yeah.
So the rate funded capital is calculated by, you know, when we increase our revenue with the fourteen percent per year. You know, of course, we have to cover our operating maintenance, existing debt service and any new debt service. Anything left over is our planned rate-funded capital. So the, the rates are set in a way to cover your uh cash operating expenses, borrowing costs. And then intentionally set to also throw off a little bit of revenue to rate fund part of your capital program so that you're not. Overly relying on debt or GFCs to, to pay for all of it.
And it looks like over the next, over the five years that are shown there, we're looking at probably what? Two and a half, two point two, two and a half million? All part?
I can look right now on my other screen. And give you that answer.
Thank you.
Okay, so with that rate plan. We're looking at water utility. Yeah, about two and three-quarter million or so. Over the, over, over the entire study period.
Thank you.
Be honest, question. Joe, do you have any questions or comments?
Uh, not at the moment, other than um I'm not necessarily opposed to what's been presented thus far.
Right, you're there, we can't see you.
That's okay, appreciate it.
Okay, Poggy, sewer.
Alright, move into the sewer utility, I tried to structure it i- in a similar way. But this capital program has a couple of differences. In, in some ways, more grants, you've got uh, you know, three million grant here, three point two million grant here, a two million grant for this project. These have been received and or awarded. There are a few projects in here after discussions with Jay are, are somewhat grant contingent. Meaning that the timing of the projects are not set in stone. So we, we agreed that assuming some level of grant funding. But not entirely grant funding these projects would be reasonable. So those noted in that more orange color, we assumed forty percent grant funding. But these grants have not yet been awarded, I, I don't think there's applications out, but that's just part of the. The planning process based on the success the city has gotten in the past and based on the flexibility in the timing of these projects. You can see that this CIP's nearly double that of water, it's closer to. Four and a half to five and a half million dollars per year, nearly thirty-three million dollars uh in total. Over the same planning period. In terms of the sewer utility general facilities charge, uh right now, there's a, a regular sewer. GFC and then a reclaimed water GFC, uh we'd recommend combining them into a, a single GFC. And you know, right now, that regular sewer GFC for a new single-family connection would be about three thousand, three hundred dollars. A certain part of town, Grandview Heights, it's, it's less, but uh in terms of that typical new single-family customer, about thirty-three hundred dollars. Reclaimed water, not many customers uh hooking up to that at the moment, but. That's much smaller, about three hundred dollars per new connection. And just like water, the larger the meter size, uh the faster these charges scale up. And based on our preliminary calculations, uh the GFC, the maximum defensible charge could be somewhere in the range of twelve to fifteen thousand dollars. And uh, wanted to point out, that's the maximum defensible charge by policy council could. The maximum defensible charge by policy, council could. Adopt something less than that or phase into that level over time. For the purposes of the rate forecast, we assumed the council would adopt. Maybe halfway in between, plus eight thousand dollars for a three quarter inch. Water meter. And would be up to council to decide. Whether you go to the, to the full amount, which will come back at a later meeting and share what that is, but. Could be, you know, a strategy to phase into that over time to provide. Lead time for development to learn of these potential changes, uh, that sort of thing, but to, to give you an idea of what. The current charge would be for two hundred units per year, it's about six, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars of GFC revenue per year. Under an eight thousand dollar GFC for the sewer utility, that's closer to one point six million dollars per year, so it gives you an idea of. Uh, what type of cost recovery you could be getting from development at the eight thousand dollar level. Sewer utility capital funding strategy does not assume any borrowing. Above what's already on the books, but it does assume, as we noted, those. Unsecured grants for those uh grant contingent projects, so we've got. Nearly twenty seven percent of the capital funding strategy coming from those unsecured grants. Twenty two percent has already been. Uh, secured via awarded to grants. Uh, about twenty percent would come from GFCs, new growth as they connect to the system. And then. Cash reserves, rate funded capital would fund just under one third of the entire capital program. Through the end of twenty twenty nine.
Is, is that twenty one percent based on the eight thousand dollars or the?
Yes, based on the eight thousand dollar GFC. In terms of, of the sewer utility forecast, we can see. You've got the same type of setup, operating and maintenance costs, just over four million dollars per year. We've got, as Jay mentioned earlier, quite a bit more existing debt service on loans already taken out. Which adds uh nearly another two million dollars. And then anything above that would be rate funded capital, so you can see with our. Annual four and a half percent rate increases that are being proposed, you can grow that rate funded capital over time. And that allows you to avoid borrowing in the future. Assuming you get some of those unsecured grants out into the future, just as the city has. Been fortunate enough to get those secured. Uh, for those three projects we talked about earlier. And then wanted to point out, towards the end of the forecast, one of the city's loans is paid off, so you can see. Uh, the existing debt service drops in twenty twenty nine, so that might be a good time to. Double check a few of the numbers to see if our growth is doing. In terms of. New rate revenue, new GFCs, and whether or not. That level of rate adjustment in the future would be needed when that debt service drops off i- in twenty twenty nine. Any questions on the sewer utility before we hit the concluding slides?
I just have a question for whoever, so if the GFCs were twelve, fifteen thousand, would that reduce the need to raise? The regular rates? Or? Because that's a security requirement on the eight thousand GFCs.
It, it could, assuming we had good growth actually happened, right? Um, we don't have any imperative sewer projects that are limiting growth right now, like in, in the water utility. So um, over time, yes, it would definitely help out um, the capital part of the sewer program.
Thank you.
Any other questions about sewer?
Okay, we'll move on to the conclusion. And here's where we will share those monthly rate surveys. As well as uh, the single family GFC surveys, the first one here is that monthly single family rate survey. We've got water bills shown in the darker blue color. At the bottom, and then the sewer portion of the bills shown in the green color on top. And we worked with Jay to come up with a list of. Uh, comparable utilities, and then also added some regional utilities. And those comparable utilities, and we looked at. Number of residences, whether or not they had their own sewer and water treatment plants versus a. You know, regional sewer treatment, for example, with Lacey, Olympia, Tumwater. They have it hooked up to a regional treatment service, so it's a mix of. Regional cities, also a mix of those maybe more comparable utilities, similar size, going through similar types of things. You can see there, uh, typical single family customer in the city of Shelton, paying about a hundred and sixty dollars per month. With the rate adjustments proposed in the presentation here tonight, would go up to about a hundred and seventy dollars per month. In contrast, the city's single family GFCs, these are, you know, one time. Charges paid by development upfront. Are at the opposite end, on the lowest end of the survey group, you can see here. The current charges add up to about forty five hundred dollars, the next closest would be, you know, Washougal. Monroe, kind of in the eleven to twelve thousand dollar range, and there's quite a few in the region. That are in that sort of fifteen to sixteen thousand dollar range. And Lacey there at the top, about twenty thousand dollars. That, you know, there are a lot of. Caveats to go along with these types of surveys. Some of these may be newer utilities or older utilities, going through different phases of. Asset reinvestment. Cities of different sizes, all, all sorts of different variables, but. Certainly striking to see. On the monthly rates among the highest. And in the general facility charge among the lowest. So. As Jay mentioned earlier. Higher GFCs can have a benefit on monthly rates over the long term. If we're able to capture that growth as it occurs.
If I can jump in. Really quick, I guess another way of saying that, if we would have been. Collecting the appropriate GFCs historically. When we reached an environmental emergency at the sewage treatment plant, we would have had the capital. Or we would have had a plan and the capital to replace the sewage treatment plant outside of debt service. Which would have. Decreased, ultimately decreased our. Monthly utility costs because we wouldn't have such high of debt service. So. The correlation between GFCs and monthly utility payments, and that's the line I'm drawing. Um, so as we're setting these. Rates and GFCs in particular, moving forward. Thinking about. What happened in the past and. Trying to prevent that from happening in the future, I think is pretty important, so.
Question, all right, so it's. Hard to do with your summary, slide ten and slide twenty. Is there? Is it has to be three thousand dollars for the GFC for the water, and the reason I ask has a lot to do with this. I was thinking this correlation before we got this paid where we're at right now. So you do your one time fee, if you do it more than three thousand dollars, you'll have to pay it once, does that bring that fourteen percent down? That they have to pay on that monthly? So let's say we adopt instead of a three thousand dollars, I'm just gonna throw a random number, let's say forty five hundred dollars, right? Does that bump it up enough that we don't have to hit their monthly?
So as growth happens, it would over time, if you go to the higher GFC rates. That, and when we go back in, because it takes projects. So as the development comes in and you charge hard, higher GFCs, the projects get paid more by the development end. And a few years from now, when we come back and do a rate study. Those projects are being higher, with the higher funded um by the development community, but it's still not a guaranteed revenue source.
I, I think slide twelve demonstrates that perfectly because. With the higher GFC, that, that addresses your rate funded capital, which is kind of brown color at the top. And that doesn't kick in until twenty twenty five, so the GFCs wouldn't necessarily. Depending on what's realized through development, wouldn't necessarily kick into that rate funded capital until twenty twenty five.
But I mean, to be blunt, it's not even only what growth we see, but what we have capacity to allow. Right, if we, if, if we have a project we want to move in tomorrow, we're charging great GFCs when we don't have the capacity to add into their system. Which in some of us towns is a reality. We have to be able to fund that, and so GFCs can't back fund that.
And how many GFCs did we collect last year?
I think. I know there's about eleven single families built, and there's a couple duplexes, I believe, so I, it was. And I don't know about business, we, we, we can certainly, we can certainly get that. But that wasn't last year, I don't believe. Yeah, exactly. My, I'd haste, I'd hastily guess, uh, you know, if it's much more than twenty five.
Okay. So I mean, the difference would be about like a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. From what we want to raise them to, what we would have collected, we would have collected about a hundred, extra hundred and thirty K.
You know. Yeah, the, the um, the forty nine houses built in Shelton Springs and. Sixteen seventeen, that starts making more of a dent, but we start looking at, I think, five years, I like the single time residences then. I don't know, seventy houses or something like that, single family, they're certainly with their commercial development with. Larger meters, with higher GFC that would apply, um, I think some of the best few places is. I'd have a two inch. Meter, so higher, you know, higher GFC rate at that point, um, but certainly not the volume that, that moves the needle very much.
Gotcha, so even through those seventies, we're talking just shy of half a million.
You know, that helps, that gives us four hundred, right, today, that gives us four hundred more additional units on the. Um, angle side pressure zone, uh, right, without the incurring uh debt service there, but. Yeah. Well, I think, looking at the numbers, I was like, wow, why aren't we catching up with their GFC rates in the future? I think that's like number one thing we should do, and secondly, um, I don't know if we can somehow ameliorate the fourteen percent. Punch in the gut for the next three years to make our three percent, so that's my feedback, it's like. We can only get to the Lacy and Tumwater rates, we have higher GFC in the future, so. Um, I'm just concerned about punching the gut for the next three years for fourteen percent. But uh.
It'll, it'll be more than that, though, being realistic about it, just running those numbers, look, if we do twenty five a year, we're gonna collect an extra hundred and thirty grand a year. So, I mean, when we have the development, we can afford to bring in that, because we can, because we have the water capacity. I mean, there's, there's people waiting in the wings that, that wanna come in and do two hundred homes, but right now, they can't start breaking ground right now, even if we wanted to. We don't have the capacity.
So we need to have a plan to have an increased quantity and keep our quality of water for future development and for bay. For bay oysters and for whatever we use, just living here for our clean water, so. I think in the future, it's pretty for us to start thinking about how can we capitalize, get more grants, maybe get our grant writer to get um. Huge grants, to get huge water projects, to get our two hundred units in here per year, and then eventually in five or six years. Get our water rates to a level where we're competing with the other municipalities.
Well, you know, I mean, you hit a good point, that uh, when you add more users to the system, you have more revenue, right?
And then we're, hate to use the word, but we're socializing the risk or the cost.
That's correct, you dividing the cost.
We have more people in the system.
I mean, GFC, adding a building and everything, that just puts a strain on our sewer plant, so when, then we have to. Build that out.
And, and, you know.
Yeah.
So let's remember, our GFCs are up here around eleven thousand, or even maybe more, and lowered them for an experiment. Back in what, fifteen, fourteen, fifteen, to try to spur growth, didn't spur anything. I mean.
Yeah.
A little.
The ti- timing on the real estate market to have that a lot to do with that as well, so I mean, it's, there's, there's, there's other factors than you said. I mean, like, i- i- if we had our GFCs, oh, we didn't, we still didn't have a lot of.
Yeah.
So it's. Yeah.
There is a direct correlation between the GFCs and the rates, but it's, it's just not as. You can look at the, one of the higher GFCs, you put order to the rates. And they're all in the low end, but that, that was an overnight that they got there, so the rates that set higher.
Well, I'm comfortable with the recommendations, and I'm comfortable with them, I, I mean, I think we can move forward with them. But also, I like, if we could maybe find some kind of program, proceed your discount tool that we already do. You know, I, I think it's, it's gonna add, you know, down the road is probably, by twenty nine, it's gonna add quite a bit to. The bill, so.
I mean, we're looking at just the base rate plus the utility taxes, going from roughly a hundred and seventy one to two hundred and thirty nine, so it's about a sixty eight dollar difference. Start to finish at the base rate.
But uh, yeah, I'm a couple of them forward, which.
That, that's what we wanna hear, well, since this is obviously this is a public hearing, we'll have a public hearing, we can have another study session, so. Want to garner your feedback, wanna garner some options, wanna be able to provide you more information that we might not be able to provide you today, answer all your questions again tonight, though. And then bring this back to you, um, whether it's a study session or back for a public hearing, I think we tend to play at a state for September fifteenth. Is that sound right, Jay?
The uh, Sept- September.
Yeah, but uh, certainly.
Second, second hearing will be, what, the nineteenth?
Um, certainly there is some. Information we need to have forward to us so we can budget appropriately, right? We need to have to make some decisions on, on levels of service. If uh, if we don't need some of these recommendations, we have to address. You know, our day to day operations, obviously, and not to mention potentially those long term capital. Projects at the same time, so we need a little planning, if that means it's, we kick it back from September fifth, we're happy to do that to meet the council's needs, so. We're happy to take any comments, questions. So if we find more grants, our debt service will be lower in the future too, because we won't have to bond anything? Yeah, we offset, you know, CIP costs, right, but from. By a grand from what we anticipated to pay for through um, through rates or GFCs, absolutely, it could very, very well redo. Us to cooperate with our local municipalities and get these big water, water. Projects going. Yeah, they're, yeah, they're competitive, they're competitive grants, we've had some good luck with um, our state delegation over there, like most recently, the one point eight million dollars. The angle side, upper angle side, angle side booster zone, um, there's no guarantees, we're going into a session that's um, you know. The interim, I guess, you know, it's one year out, so there's not as much money available um, through the state legislature this next term, so. Um, we can cross our fingers, we can ask for some funds, uh, obviously, um, nothing, nothing. I for one, want to make sure that we have a huge quantity of water and that the best quality of water, and that we. Increase our department size to have the capacity to have more projects come in and um, raise a number of housing and. The, the tax base and the um. The cleanness, while maintaining the, the uniqueness and the cleanness of our, of our water systems. That's my direction, and hope we can go towards that.
But I think it's worth. Okay, moving forward, the recommendation.
Yeah, okay.
I have one more question, if I may, I'm looking at the utility taxes, the eleven point six three and the five percent, if or when would those be up for discussion? Because that's something that we haven't talked about, how that impacts the rate. Or at least the bill, I should say.
What, what would you like to see, I guess, I, we, we can, we can bring that back through uh, the study session on the twenty second. To our budget study session, that'll, that'll be more specific to the general fund, I think, than what you'll see through utilities, but uh, we can certainly. Um, show you. Uh, what has been collected on an annual basis, what we project and how that affects the general fund.
How do you?
And how that affects, obviously.
So you'd like to see, based on this rate increase, what would that mean with the current tax?
I mean.
Utility tax?
Because I, yeah, and I've, you penciled it out, if we kept the existing utility tax on top of this. Model that's proposed, uh. But I don't know when's the last time we examined, is that the right utility tax, and is that something that we've considered?
Yeah, well, and how do you come, I don't understand how you come up with that percentage utility tax.
You will vote on it.
We'll, we'll research and see when those were raised, if, if we have some background from study sessions, uh. When, when they were established and when they're raised, and see if we can find some, some historical data for you.
Yeah.
Certainly, if you raise the utility rate and you have, keep the same utility tax associated. Certainly, if you raise the utility rate and you have, keep the same utility tax associated, generates more money, right, for the general fund. So. Obviously, if you, if you so chose, you know, you can certainly adjust that utility rate, uh, knowing what its impact would be on the general fund. They can supply that to you.
And in general, I appreciate this direction. I don't think any of us want to see the rates. Increase, but I think there's a reality that we're facing in order to maintain our system and serve our residents. The only thing I do wonder is what it would look like if instead of fourteen, 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 three. We maybe split over those first four years at, you know, eleven and a quarter percent before dropping back down, what that would do to our overall. Funds coming in, cause I think hovering right around ten, eleven percent is not abnormal for the cost increase. Um, and it may be something that we can't absorb, but I'd be interested to see what the figures might look like.
And why we went from fourteen percent to three percent.
Because that point, actually, we're pulling into the funding that we need to.
Yeah.
The projects.
Yeah, you gotta, you gotta go back and look at the, at the scale that shows where we are.
Based in that, again, that is based on some growth, right?
Right.
Yeah, so that's why it goes to three percent, because you can, you can incur or pay for some of that rate funded capital that can decrease. Based on, based on GFCs.
Right now, we're not even funding operating maintenance, we're below the line.
Yes.
So we're not taking enough money in to pay the bills right now. So that, so we have to put general fund money to.
No, it, it's, it's, it's reserved, it's fun balanced, but we have, the, the general fund's not supporting the utilities at this point.
But eventually, if you don't do something, then you run out of reserves.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Like Deeter said, what about eleven, ten, ten percent?
I'm just saying over four years, so stretching the same increase, but just stretching it over four years instead of three, dropping it would be a.
Togi, did you catch that comment from council? What happens if we just stretch it out like the year five, you know, that sort of thing and uh, you know, smooth it over a longer period?
Yes, I, I did catch that. We, we can take a look at that to see if that's feasible, given the, the capital program and the timing provided.
And it may not be, but.
Well, the fourth, the forty percent for twenty four doesn't even cover operating maintenance. We have to go up. At least fourteen percent. Twenty four. Otherwise, we're still not paying the bills. I mean, I would, I, I guess I would say, if you wanna do that, let's go to fifteen percent for, for twenty four and then go to ten percent. Ten and ten, that way, we're at least probably getting up there to that line.
Because there's gonna be.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, people are like. Fourteen percent, you know, that's.
Yeah, I mean.
Oh, these are all hard numbers for me to look at. I'm looking at this with somebody who pays more than a dozen plus water bills a month. And they're gonna go up fourteen percent. I'm looking at somebody who builds homes in towns, doubling my GFCs. These are hard numbers to swallow.
Yeah.
I look at the data and I understand it. I mean, it's just like balancing the checkbook, you gotta make more money or you gotta stop hitting. But like, what, what do we do here? But I mean, trust me, my, my, my guts are turning. I'm like, God, I should go to, I go to Lacy and pay the, pay the same amount and I believe lower utility bills. But, but I believe in Shelton, so it's, it's hard. I'm still not a hundred percent on board, but. Yeah, no, it's, it's, it's hard, it's hard.
So um, so back to kinda carrying this out maybe over four years or something. Um, do you wanna see a percentage or just can we, can we give you what's appropriate maybe to the, after analyzing the data, what? You know, what that looks like, we're, okay, yes, what that looks like as far as our maintenance operations, our existing debt service, right? We have to cover those first and foremost. Those, those aren't gonna go away. Now, we can cut some of our maintenance. And operations, right? But that is a, that is a, that is a slippery slope, right, to walk down, right? Because we start, um, and start letting our facilities further deteriorated, you heard. Um, they're fairly aging, we have a lot of infrastructure in place, we have to step, take care of those. Um, we start walking the fine line, so I would recommend that.
I had, I had someone say to me the other day, why is everything looking dry and grungy in Shelton, around Shelton? And I said, well, it may get worse, but we had to cut services, we've had to cut things back. When you do that. That's what happened.
Most of those, most of those areas are general fund areas too, right? They, they pay the same utility rates that, that. That commercial and residential customers do. Our parks department pays the same water rates for irrigation account.
Oh, yeah.
Feel the same way. So.
Yeah.
These are independent utility funds, right?
Yeah.
So I looked at my water bill yesterday, and so I've scratched my head, I know what I pay. And at first, I was thinking the overall bill and I was trying to multiply that and I was like, oh wait, that's not what they're gonna add, all right? So it's the actual base of that, the water itself and the sewer charge itself, and that's where it comes into play. So I did the math and our power or our water bill is pretty high at my house. I can just five buck using the water, small house, but. A lot of showers. Anyways, so I did the math and with these rate increases, it comes to uh, an increase from this bill would be twelve dollars and thirty four cents. I can handle that, if that means we have the services that we need and, and I hate it when we're in the red.
And to piggyback off that share, and I think one other thing that we have not looked at recently is the. I guess, community funded needs option on this, like, is there a roundup option on the bill? Like with your P V V bill, but those are the project share. I know we used to have a citizens of Shelton, we had little pamphlets in our office for a long time. But you. Yeah, support our Sheltonians program, but I don't know that we're necessarily utilizing it, because there's a lot of people who would probably say. Round up eight, you know, eight cents.
Yeah.
Ninety two cents, whatever. And granted, again, it's not a lot of money, but that might allow us to look at something like Mary Nisco was discussing in providing some. Offset for those in our community who need a temporary relief.
Yeah.
And I did wanna comment to you on the new construction taxing, the treatment plants and stuff, that's usually not realized. Until further out, so you have some time to catch up, because it's a tight line system, it's brand new, it's not leaking in, adding infiltration. The water tanks are newer, so there's not as much maintenance.
Like a new car.
Yeah. I don't, I think we just need that doc proposed recommended by the, by FCS and just.
I like to be those numbers then.
I mean, I, I mean, I don't, I mean, I personally don't like them, I don't.
I don't think anyone likes them.
But, you know, I, I, I think we need to do it as. On the GFCs, I think, do need to go up, but they were lowered for an experiment that didn't work and.
But you tried it.
You know, we tried it and. Let it go quite a few years, it'd be like seven years, I think. And we, seventy homes in seven years, so. Average ten homes a year. I haven't seen it, what it knows a year, but. It, it didn't work and now we don't have, we can't build infrastructure because we don't have the money. And we don't wanna borrow another fifty million dollars for a treatment plan in ten years. And if we don't do something, we will be borrowing fifty million dollars. To do that. So we need that water tank built in the next few years and.
Yesterday.
Um, yeah, it's gonna take three years, even if you decided today to build a water tank, it's gonna take three years, she said. So.
So my rate increase would be two coffees. What did she say?
Already, it would be two coffees.
Two coffees.
But uh, so I, I, I think that I would, I would go ahead and go with the recommendations.
But it sounded like you wanted to increase that first year to cover costs.
Well. I'm saying that if you wanted to go ten percent, ten percent, we should do that fifteen, but if, but this recommendation from FCS. And I'm pretty sure I'm comfortable with these recommendations as well, that we should probably just go ahead and do them and be done with it.
We're comfortable with the data, right? Let's be clear, we're not comfortable with the ratings.
No.
It's, it's not something that we, we relish bringing to, we're comfortable with the data. Um, Jay and Brent have worked really hard on this, as well as other staff. Uh, and we have all the confidence, we're all in FCS group and the information they're providing to us, we're happy to. Manipulate that if you wanna see that worked over, you know, a, a longer period of time, certainly can bring that to you, absolutely. Uh, it's not a comfortable situation for staff either. Um, we feel the same way as, as council, but um, we're comfortable with the data.
And thank you for making this process very data driven, to be able to show exactly what the need is, how we can fund it and why. This has to happen.
I think ten and a half percent over four years is easier to swallow than fourteen percent over three years. Just.
Psychological for the customer.
But I don't know that.
I, I think we wanna show you that though, right? I, I, I hate, I hate to make that.
Yeah.
I, I hate to just say that, that's, that's, that's the way to go, unless you, unless you kinda see.
I wanna see that, I, I'd like to see the numbers that are just going.
I know, I, I heard that from, yeah, um, council member, um, McDowell, heard that.
I'm okay with, with Americans, but I, I prefer looking at the, the compromise.
I'd like to look at it, it's not feasible, but.
Well, I'm just looking at just the maintenance operation, ten and a half percent a year, even three years doesn't bring us, doesn't cover maintenance. It doesn't, it's right there, it's.
Well, we can bring it to you, when it, how it affects the, the fund balance, right?
We go ten and a half, it comes with forty two, if we go to eleven percent, we get the two percent break. I don't know.
Is that okay? You'd love to see it at least?
I, I'd like to see the GFC for water be a little bit higher.
Okay. Um, I believe they're still analyzing that a bit.
They are, yeah.
Yeah. And so uh, with, with the GFC for water and sewer, they both have the potential to go up a little bit. Uh, I know on the sewer end, um, you know, they were in the rates, they have eight thousand.
Right.
In there and it can go up from there. I mean, you said the historic one was eleven thousand around, which is comparable to a lot of the other cities.
Has to be defensible though, right? It has to be matched to our, to our C I P program. Um, this can't be an arbitrary number.
Correct.
Yeah.
So if you don't mind, can we bring this forward in at the fifth? And you, you looked at them both, you comfortable with that, not having another study session?
I'm comfortable.
To see that, to see what the council made.
With your business item?
Yeah, under business and a public hearing and.
I'm with council member Sherman, if we can go to eleven thousand and justify it, let's go.
Well, yeah, and it gives you those in here, it's the justification right now, they're, they're gonna fine tune it, but it's up to four dollars for water.
Now you're pushing.
But that's, you guys get to say.
I'd love to see those slide up too, because I mean, we're, we're gonna throw them on these first couple of years and, and it's not gonna be a big developer. That gets hit with that, it's gonna be the one offs. But if we slide, as we come closer to the time where we're close to be unable to build a water tower, we're close to be able to get that. It starts kicking in now, and when the two hundred home guy comes, we're stepping into that where we actually realize big capital, not. Not hitting the twenty people a year that are building homes, because that, what, what happens when that goes to ten people now, we're still right where we were.
Yeah.
So I mean, it's just, just like if the two thousand sixteen, would, would we have built seventy homes in that amount of years, or we built thirty five? So, cause it's, it's a significant increase and you're more than, you're doubling what those GFCs are, you're now taking it up from. Ten plus thousand dollars to almost twenty, because by the time you start going through all the fees that you're paying, not just GFCs, but all the other fees to get water sewer. I mean, it, it's, it's a substantial increase. And home values haven't shot up, interest rates are high and possibly rising again, we're not in a frenzied market. So just may, maybe a slide on that. To where we're, we're hitting eleven, twelve thousand dollars in twenty five, twenty six.
Is that for both water and sewer?
That, that would, I mean.
Conceptually.
We're, we're all throwing things out, so I mean, I'm.
So you're talking about aligning it essentially with the buildout of the system. So as we have capacity to add that to the system, then the GFCs would take on a greater role.
Correct, because, because I mean, if we're gonna have two hundred GFCs in a year, heck yeah, we want eleven thousand dollars. But we're gonna have fifteen or twenty, yes, we will realize more capital on that, but once again, we're going into speculation. We now only have half the people build homes, because now why am I gonna do it here when I have to pay the same amount as I pay somewhere else? And get the cheaper utilities. So.
Some of it does pay debt service though, right? For, for projects that are completed ahead of time to, to facilitate that growth, right? That's the conundrum that you're in now, the, the chicken and the egg.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Well, you got part of the city that doesn't want growth, wants to keep shelter quiet and sleepy little town. So they don't want, they don't want, but to get this all. To get it where we need to be, we need, we need that revenue, we need the houses, we need the GFCs.
We've got a great Venn diagram we can share with you that shows, you know. Um, low, low rates, you know, no growth and in the middle of that Venn diagram is basically, you know, impossible. You know?
Right.
That, that growth has to spread that burden amongst the ratepayers. Um, and if it doesn't, then the existing ratepayers bear that burden.
That's right.
Uh, and then you don't see it. So we'll share that through our budget process, it's a great illustration of kind of. That conundrum that we have in a small town like this, because I have friends as well here, and they have well-paying jobs, right? They're comfortable with their homeownership and everything, they, they like it how it is and they wanna see that growth. There's others that need that growth to support their businesses, to provide more housing, and give opportunities for their kids or grandkids. Same as community that you might wanna stay in, uh, we need job centers, we need that economic development.
Yeah.
All hinges on infrastructure, water and sewer are critical.
Yeah.
Yeah, we met, we met mayors and council members uh, last year at D W C that. Haven't done half what we've done, and they're looking, some of them were looking at having to borrow a hundred million dollars and, and some cities are smaller than ours. I don't know, we don't want.
We don't want, no, no. I'm not here fighting to keep this in the forties for rates, it's just.
Yeah.
I, I, I do look at it from a different side, not one of you are gonna pay these fees probably ever in your life, and if you do, you'll do it once. So I, I, I'm talking about the guy that's doing it three times a year, four times a year, and that is his livelihood. You've just literally taken a quarter of their profit away from them. And so it's, it's, it's a balance. And, and, and like I said, I mean, it is different when you're spreading it out over a two hundred home project. And you're having those costs come in, but there's, because the people that are developing in Shelton aren't multi, you know, eight figure earners. They're, they're people that are flipping a house or selling a house and they're making forty, fifty thousand dollars off that before taxes. Not two hundred and fifty thousand dollars off that. So when I'm making fifty thousand dollars and you're taking eight more thousand dollars away from me. You're denting, it's, it, it almost, it almost becomes cost prohibitive as a small investor. So, you, you know.
We get to all these small investments now that actually use these into a lot, so we've waived um, GFCs on and getting some houses built on them.
And, and I agree.
You know.
But yeah, I'd, I'd love to see more too, and I don't think that the solution to that is, let's cut it more, because we can't do that, but. Yeah. It.
But if you're flipping a house, it's already there, so you're not paying that yet, right?
Well, when I say, what, whether you're building a new construction home to sell for, or, or, I mean, of course, a flip is different, but like.
I just wanted to say that on record, so people don't get confused.
Well, yeah, people flip new homes too, so I mean, what, however, you're, you're correct.
Deputy Mayor, I haven't heard from you much.
Um, no, my, my biggest thing with the utility rates, um, so when are we expecting to go through this exercise again, I guess? How often? No, 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 I, how often are we doing rate studies for water and sewer, five years, three years?
I'd recommend three and four maximum, uh, just because we have the debt dropping off on the sewer. I'd like to take a look at that uh, in the near, when we get closer to that. And then also see what's happening with the GFCs, you know, we're estimating some units happening. If those don't happen, or if they're greater, um, it's just a good opportunity. That we're making a significant adjustment right now, you wanna fine tune a year or four from now, right? And so I recommend go three years with the rates, look at it again, I, it's a significant process, obviously with FCS. The, the data alone, I mean, ask Mike, we have been emailing for months now. My fingers are worn out, because FCS asks every question in the world, a good job, you guys, learned a lot. But at the end of the day, that bulk information's already gone to them, uh, they know our processes, they know our financials. And uh, you know, I would, after, I'd go three years on the rates and then look at them, that year or four would be my recommendation. Uh, Togi, um, you do these for a lot of other places, uh, what's your thought?
Yeah, e- every three to four years is pretty common. Some will go every one or two years for smaller updates, some utilities will wait. Every six years was pretty common back when water comprehensive plans were every six years, but. Those have been kicked out, I think, every ten years. So, yeah, I think that's a pretty common timeline, a lot can change in three to four years. And as Jay mentioned, you could get more or less growth, you could get more or less grants. Debt service is dropping off for sewer in part, so.
Yeah, I understand. It, kind of where I'm going with that is with the utility billing, um, since, you know, day one of being a Shelton resident. I guess I've just craved stability, um, and I believe stabilizing our rates. Um, in a way that makes sense is a good idea, and to get there, I understand we have to climb a mountain. Um, and, but I agree and I, I appreciate the process, because in my opinion, to get. To some stability in our rate structures, we need to know what we have, the assets. To some stability in our rate structures, we need to know what we have, the assets that we have, the condition our assets are in. Um and then appropriately program those assets to be maintained and replaced at some point in time. And at the same time, we also need to have a high degree of confidence in what is coming in terms of growth and change in our community and. And I believe through our comprehensive planning processes and our other partnerships that we should have. Um on top of some design and, you know, um standards that we've, you know, revisited in development. We should have a pretty good idea of what could be facing the city in the next several years, so. Um I guess while it is discouraging to look at the bottom line numbers, um it is encouraging to me. That we are climbing to a point where we will stabilize, um we will get out of the. Um critical emergencies where we're borrowing large sums of money and causing drastic effects. Um we will get a handle on our capital programs, because we will replace things when they need to be replaced, because we will appropriately fund them. And we won't have to see these large spikes in the future, so I'm I'm excited to see that. Um not so happy with the growth um in in the bill at the end of the month, but. Um understanding that for the long term, this is the better decision, I'm supportive of what was presented today. Um and I I'm encouraged to kind of hear the conversation move forward as we get towards action on that, so thank you to everybody involved.
And also there, I mean, we're in line for probably some, some grants from the federal government that could. Maybe change us in a couple of years, correct? I mean, if we were to get a wish list.
Certainly hope so.
It it could change some of this, I mean, we still need to plan for the future, we we still don't want, you know, even if we got all the money we wanted from the government, we built everything we wanted. We still gonna have stuff in five years, ten years, twenty years, labor is gonna go up three, five percent every year, no matter what. You know, life bills are gonna go up then.
But I think it's important that we are, we are basing this race on what we need, given what we know now. And then we can absolutely adjust as new information comes in and and thank you to staff and F C S group, because. We don't have the right information going in, we're not able to make a good decision, as hard as it is, so thank you very much.
What is the, what is the? What, how much we pay per month on the sewer?
Well, we pay it annually, we can certainly get that information for you, but you know. I don't think it was in here exactly, but we can share that.
It's not, it's fine. Okay, did you speak to that, you need to do a round table? Anybody have any further comments or questions about this, it's really, it's really tough, I think.
I guess if council members, and my only feedback on this, just based on some historical, I mean, if council members, after we. Adjourn from this, I'm sure phones are gonna ring. Um from our typical community members who are interested in these topics, um you know, and others, so. Um if you hear something um that is a better solution or some serious feedback. Please make sure that gets shared with the rest of the group sooner than later, so we can redirect or bring something back to Mark, so. Um so we're not at the action item and then making a line item adjustment and cutting things in half or whatever we're doing, so. Uh that's my only feedback, is if there's ideas out there, I'm I'm all on board to hear things out, I, I'm not. You know, solidly set one way or the other, I I agree with the presentation, but if there's a better mousetrap, I'm always interested in hearing it, so. I encourage time of conversation, so thanks.
I think that's it, sir. Thank you, uh F C S group.
Thank you very much.
Augie?
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Okay, does anybody want to break? I think we have a couple of new items for discussion tonight. Okay, how about a five-minute recess?
Discussion, I think that city manager basically got city manager report for us tonight first.
Yeah, I I certainly want to focus on some of the efforts uh down in Brewers specifically and some of the um. Some of the opportunities cities taken by some of our our local service providers, so I I know that it's been a topic of conversation. Yeah, both publicly and uh you know, and I think privately amongst community and rumors and everything else. So I want to make sure that we want to um communicate with you, the council and the public that uh it's not being. Uh left or unaddressed necessarily, um I can tell you in the last uh week and a half, I've had five. Meetings amongst uh service providers, um and then some actual some activity down at uh. At Brewer Park, when I see activity, I mean uh coordinating with Crossroads Housing, Community Lifeline, Shelton Youth Connection. And our local police department, our existing city staff and in providing some cleanup. We've taken about a half a ton of garbage out of there over two instances last Thursday and just uh yesterday. On Monday morning, uh our local service providers have provided outreach to the individuals down there. Um give them opportunities to um take advantage of some of the services here, provides intake as such. And progressively work with them to try to find a better solution for them rather than what's happening down in your park now. Um we have, we have some great service providers and the agencies I just mentioned, they're really engaged in this. Um they have limited resources um to a certain extent, but there are some resources available. Community Lifeline has some beds available at times, uh the individuals are being offered those beds, not all of them are taking advantage of those bed. So that's when the decision-making process comes in, right? We have a camping ordinance, we have some park regulations, uh so what happens at that point? If we go to a level of enforcement where people aren't taking advantage of these opportunities, um where do these individuals go? What's reasonable for them, right? Because they're dealing with situations that I think that are hard to fathom, hard for us to understand at all times, right? We have people dealing with mental health issues, substance issues, um chronic homelessness, uh abuse. And things like that that um put them in these situations, so um we want to be uh strategic, we want to be. As thoughtful as we can uh with these individuals, but we also want to lessen the impact and residual impact as it moves outside. Brewer Park into the community and and the neighborhood, um if enforcement occurs. Um a number of these individuals be somewhere in our community, and so how does that impact um our downtown? Our residents, our business community and our first responders, uh to a certain extent, having um having any. Call it an encampment at this point, um having something like that is easier for first responders friendly, right? You've got folks in one location, they're not spread out up on the hillsides, uh. Other areas that might be inaccessible uh at all times and not be able to respond to some of the needs that occur there. Um certainly it intensifies that use around that neighborhood and we're seeing the impacts, we're hearing the impacts from the neighbors down there. And we're really sympathetic to what's happening and trying to address that the best we can, so. Um we are having ongoing conversations, I appreciate calling Carmichael and Keely Communities and. And as you know, been to basically every um every meeting uh and offering services. Um she is uh I think calling or emailing me every day, talking about opportunities to provide more permanent supportive housing. The community, I know that uh Tanya and everybody at Crossroads Housing is certainly interested in that as well too, as we've had some conversations there. Uh Community Lifeline has reached out, uh we met with Congressman Kilmer on Friday. Uh they have a funding application with HUD to hopefully um provide an alternate location for shelter services. Uh and then uh Susan uh Kirchhoff with um Shelton Youth Connection has been involved to. Performing outreach for uh the population that falls within with them that uh, you know, their services, so those. Individuals, adults are what we're dealing with mostly down there, single adults uh are are kind of the need that we have down there right now. And the ability to find some resources for them, uh make sure that uh like I said, we can serve them, but also um. I will say that some might need more than more than just help, um some need some assistance and. With that some level of enforcement or whatever it might take, um that might be the case at times because we do have people that are coming to that area. Uh for the wrong reasons, uh and so we need to be able to enforce upon that and address that issue at the same time, so. It's it's an evolving issue, it's one that we're trying to address um systematically uh with our partners in the community, but I just want to. Update the council, check if it's time and uh certainly do our best to continue to um move forward. Uh make sure that we're providing the best services that we can down there.
Thank you, it's been very complicated, excuse me.
I was just.
She very complicated uh situation down in there and I know that we've had multiple meetings and. And get together with all of the partners and we've had meetings with sheriffs and nonprofits and the county uh Commissioner Sharon Trask. And and the Health Department and you know, we've it's been really knocking our heads together. Try to figure out ways to best solution for down there, so um thank you for leading us and getting some of this stuff going. And anybody else have any questions for for Mark?
Uh it's Community Lifeline, I think if they discontinued beating them.
Not completely.
Okay.
I I'm all for maximum enforcement when people aren't willing to take the services we're willing to provide, the problem is is that we haven't enforced anything. So it just breeds more of the negative stuff that we have, I get it, my heart bleeds for the people that want help and need help, but there's people that didn't want it, don't take it. And then we still don't enforce on it, and and that's that's where the biggest issue comes into me, once we start enforcing, that sect will start to decrease. Because we we're a free-for-all right now, you come, you camp, you get told to move, you tell them no, what do they do? They walk away. And so I'm I'm for maximum enforcement of anything that we can enforce.
And there wasn't enforcement action, I don't know, want to talk about it, but there wasn't enforcement acting down there.
Yeah.
Recently, yeah, yesterday, yeah, so it it is starting, but still, we still have beds available to do enforcement.
Yep, I mean, I agree.
The lifeline has has, you know, opened up beds, they'd come over and they'd removed um. Um trespass orders in order to get people in in the facility, uh so they're they're a willing partner at this point and that's that's the key, right? But we.
It is.
Camping ordinance needs to have those.
It does, and it does have teeth now, because now we do have the ability to take them somewhere. And it's it's just, it's it's been a long-going problem and we've been paralyzed by fear of the unknown of, are we going to get sued as a city? But we're we're giving up our city, at this point, I'd rather get sued and enforced and deal with it, and I feel like the majority of our constituents would be behind that. Because they're being negatively affected by those aspects of it, so that.
I think it's important to clarify too, though, that the camping ordinance is just one piece of that, right? Like if there is drug paraphernalia in use, if there is crime being committed, that is actionable, separate from the issue of.
Absolutely.
We had a task force on the complexity of the homelessness population and just doing one thing is not going to be sufficient. So yes, enforcement is part of the plan, but we also need to provide housing, we should have been going after housing first option, but we're not, we're going after it. A net zero kind of let let's just keep it as it is kind of approach, and that's um not being. I think pushed fast enough and the part of the problem is we don't have people who don't want a location in their backyard. Um and even though we agreed at the meetings to create a mitigation site away from downtown. The 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 site we selected is C Street landfill and that's probably gone and out. So we need to start thinking about if we do have mitigations camp, where is it going to be in the city? And who's going to accept that and who's going to um think about if we don't start thinking about housing first, we're going to keep doing this over and over and over again. Until there's until we're like other cities that have huge, huge, huge camps.
So they they allow those huge encampments, though, that's the whole thing, this is we 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 don't want to allow those huge encampments, we we need to move those on.
But I I'm just saying, there's not one approach and just not one problem we can hammer the nail in to say that that's going to solve it.
Yeah.
I'm going to say that's part of it and and we talked so much enforcement about it and we've talked about where do these people need to go? Are we going to send it to Miss Polly a hundred thirty dollars a night? Are we gonna, what are we gonna do with them? Are we gonna, you know, so I mean, so. I'm just saying, like, okay, why don't then why don't we have a mitigation site that costs ninety dollars a night to prep for people? You know, and I I'm just saying, like, there are more solutions than just.
You get sober in the squall, but you don't in a campus.
So let's let's work through some of those solutions.
Yeah.
Ri- rather than arbitrarily deciding how how these individuals are 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 going to be potentially served, right?
Fuck these people.
I'm encouraged to hear that the city is taking a leadership role in having conversations and being a partner with the people who are experts in this area. We as city council, city staff, this is not our wheelhouse, like, I think it's really important that we look at what capacity we have and support that, but. Looking at the providers and seeing how do we move that and tackling that piece of it and making small, uh you know, it's going to take time or chip away at that. It's not going to happen right and it is one piece of the puzzle, but we have to be working on that, we have to be working on housing at all levels of affordability. We have to be looking at our health system, we have to be looking at what were the recommendations that came out of the committee, so there's a lot of complexity to this. As I think we've all recognized and I applaud the city for working with our partners for progress. We may not find the right solution, but one thing has to give, right? At least some thing's being tried, it's moving, and I think that's a step in the right direction. I do think there should be a more strategic approach and maybe more of a crowdsourced solution, strategic, long-term. Because I think the homelessness task force was one piece of it that's done, so what do we do now? You know, where do we go from here?
That that.
It's kind of.
Intimidation. Lead us into Deputy Mayor had some discussion and this on this topic, so we just want to go ahead and.
Yeah, I think it's a good segue and good timing and thanks for, sorry, I can't be there tonight, guys, I wish I was there in person to talk. But um we've all been grappling with this this issue for quite some time, um. The Brewer Park incidents are continuing to expand, um Eric and I sat through, I think, three or so of the recent meetings. With the county and um various stakeholders, I mean, we packed the room and City Hall uh last week. Um and the frustrating moment in these discussions, you know, we we have all of the providers in the community, right? We have public health, we have the sheriff, we have the police chief, right? We have the people, the right people in the room to make decisions and it is incredibly difficult to get to an action step. Um whether it be the, whether it be the costs, whether it be the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals, whether it be jail space, staffing, et cetera. It's incredibly hard, so um Eric and I, we took some time, debated through this a little bit, but we said, you know. One one item that we're missing right now is we do not have a a clear direction for the city manager in order to pursue this. Um and what I'm suggesting tonight, a couple of things here, um so we have in front of you a short-term draft. Um response plan that is broken out into three objective areas, um this is based on um. Data from the homeless task force is based on conversations with nonprofits, um law enforcement, other organizations, um. These are things that I believe we can implement, we can accomplish, albeit there is a cost to some. Um there is effort to a lot of this, um that is going to require staff and time to do this, um we need to figure that out, but we need to prioritize this. We need to, as a council, provide some direction on this as opposed to uh just solve the problem, um but we need to, we need to break down some action steps. So this is very much a draft, this is very much throwing something at the wall and seeing what sticks. Um I don't necessarily need to read this out loud to everybody tonight, I I would love for everybody to take a look at this. Um and consider um synthesizing this down into some steps um that we can work with Mark on. Um and then start executing the plan, um enough talk, um enough task forces. Um I think it's just, it's time that we start executing some of these things and seeing what works and what fully doesn't and then changing course. Um as needed, um stepping through really quickly, the three core areas that I I've heard from not only community members. Business members, um homeless folks themselves, as well as the providers and subject matter experts. Um but in my mind, uh the number one thing on our plan to boil down is uh ensuring public safety and hygiene in the community. Um the three major um points under under that are um enhanced police and community presence. Which simply just gets down to deterring property crimes requires patrol, which requires us to put an emphasis on patrol. And um that's a direction, if if that's what council would like to see, then again, that's a direction we should be. Uh cooperatively providing to the city manager so we can appropriately prioritize those resources. On top of that, I'd like us to consider looking into uh patrol partnerships, especially in the downtown area. Um just because it is the city of Shelton, doesn't need, that necessarily needs to be patrolled by uh the police department in the city of Shelton. If we are suffering from staffing challenges, so looking into potentially like a downtown crime prevention task force. Which has tentacles to um community uh neighborhood watch type of organizations and those who are interested in volunteering. Um in uh and you know, obviously when it is safe to do so, um in to to work with our police department to better enhance the. The the data that we're getting in the issues downtown. Um outside that, we've talked about bathroom and restroom facilities, I'd love to establish designated public restroom sites around the city. Where we can have um under and I heard the comments from Community Lifeline about. Um the challenges with sexual assaults in public restrooms and un-unmanaged, uh you know, porta-potties and that sort of thing. And and um you know, terrible things can happen, I understand that, but also we need to figure, we just need to figure out a way to address this. Um that that works, um uh trash collection and cleanup initiatives, um. Yeah, it it costs money, it takes time, um I understand that, but um we can definitely look into potentially bolstering. Uh pickup and cleanup, and then again, um I believe Councilmember Sherman has brought this up, but mobilizing volunteer groups and. But doing this in an official capacity, um actually getting it on a calendar, advertising it publicly and coordinating it. What is it, what does that all take, right? Um the second core objective area is outreach and support services, one item that has been happening at Brewer Park since we've met. Um is a coordinated approach to providing outreach to the people in the park, why aren't people accepting the services? Why are there people who have houses hanging out in the park, being getting drunk all day long, right? Like those are moments we need to understand and we need to do that outreach and um I'm all for formulating and constructing dedicated outreach teams. Um that are that are s- set with some expectations about, you know, where they contact and when and who. Um and obviously being comprised of the right professional skill sets and funding to make that happen. Um paired with that, um I've heard nothing but good, good feedback on the DCR program. Um and our uh coordination on that, um I appreciate the city manager sending out the statement of uh weekly activities from our DCR. Um at this point, that is showing a positive in the right direction, dealing with our mental health and other uh. You know, mental or medical disorders related to this problem, um and I would like to consider doubling down on that effort. And we have, and on that front, understanding that is a cost, we have had individual organizations also agree with us that this is going well. And would be interested in 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 uh coordinating on the cost and and potentially ponying up some funds to assist with that. So rolling into the last, um which is usually the most, in my opinion, the most contentious of the conversations, which is. Um locating and establishing the temporary shelters and safe spaces around the city. Uh temporary being the key key point, um you know, mitigation sites are not permanent and nor should they be, right? We we did take some steps to ensure mitigation sites were no longer than, I believe, seven to nine months. Um but looking into um any available sites and they don't have to be public property, these are public-private partnership opportunities, in my opinion. But looking at those sites, um using any of the tools that we have to identify locations for temporary shelters, um definitely take into account access. Um and to the various resources and utilities and also making sure we minimize the community impact where we're we're sourcing those. An interesting sort of innovative concept that I heard from the exec director from Crossroads, it's just these like safe sleeping um units. That are fairly low cost, but basically there are a lot of people in the community that just need a safe place to sleep at night, they have a job. But they can't afford rent or whatever, um they just need a safe place to store their stuff and sleep for the night. Um for all intents and purposes, they're a functioning member of society, um um I'm interested in understanding what opportunities we can provide. Both whether it's potentially partnering on a purchase with the county or other organizations or even working with faith-based. Faith-based organizations to open their doors to some of these folks. Um and then uh the outreach and shelter coordination, I would definitely like to see and better understand. Um those those who are not accepting services, really understanding why and what we can do to get them into services. Understanding a lot of this is making inroads and relationships and building trust, and I totally get that and that takes time. It takes effort, it takes funding and the just the drive to do it, um and um I think, again, understanding. Um those data points and having some of that being provided to the council on a more frequent basis. You know, the status of our unhoused population and really understanding this problem. Um before we're trying to jump to some sort of action steps or any advocacy, because we we did learn a lot of things just in the short amount. Focusing on Brewer Park, um and I'm sure even today, there's there's more lessons that we've learned and are going to build off of that moving on, but. The biggest thing for me was I've yet to see anything really get put down on a piece of paper. Um that we can convey back to our staff and and ultimately prioritize this, and I'm I'm very interested in. And where the council sits, if this is all garbage, no offense to me, again, my 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 goal is to get something down. And then start executing and laying it into the priorities of our budgeting and everything else that we just got kind of done talking about, so. With that, I'll kick it back to the group.
Thanks, I I just, I always take issue with cleaning up after people, it it's a hard one, I mean, if people want to utilize that area, we could get a thousand pounds of garbage. Out of the park, a thousand pounds of garbage, how many needles were in that? How much tinfoil with fentanyl on it was in that? I mean, we're putting our people at risk to pick up other people's garbage, I mean. It may maybe with an initiative of that, you got to clean the park up before you get to sleep in it, okay? I I mean, I I don't have solutions for a lot of these, other than I I still, I'm I'm going to pound the enforcement drum of everything that we can enforce. Because when we enforce what we can enforce, we start to set a precedent, and when we don't enforce things that we can enforce, once again, we set a precedent.
So Brewer Park started the way it started because there was one tent and nobody did anything to that one tent. And if you ask some of the people who come here from different communities, why they're here, there's two reasons. Number one, it's safer to be homeless here, and number two, they don't bother you, we don't bother them, we don't nudge them, we haven't until recently. We just kind of left them alone if they didn't bother us, we didn't call the cops unless they were bothering us, there wasn't a big deal, so they grew. Because the neighbor saw and somebody else said, oh, they can do it, I can do it, they can do it, I can do it, they could do it, same thing with playground kids. Right, it's the exact same thing, so that is what has happened in Brewer Park, so we went from one to what you see and last count, I think there was fourteen or fifteen. And I know they've cleaned up, so that is what happens, we didn't stop the president soon enough and it has grown.
What, when do you think of providing a big blue dumpster? Would they throw their garbage in that or would they lay it on the ground right next to it?
It 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 takes some, takes service, it takes an effort.
Well, first I just want to say, Joe, thank you for giving us something to start this conversation, because I think we've all been stuck in this. Where can we, how can we, and how do we take these concepts and put it into something concrete, and I think there's some obvious, you know, steps forward here. I also think all of us need to keep in mind, and thank you, Joe, for bringing up the the partnership aspect of this. Being the fact that we are the only incorporated city on the county seat, we are uniquely positioned to provide those services. Which in and of itself creates other realities, and so I think that there are some really s- strong pieces here. And I think, you know, looking at what's working and the DCR team and pushing that forward, okay, let's do that. I, you know, sand cans, and you've been talking about that, Mr. Mayor, for quite some time, we've tried it in the past, it didn't work, let's try it differently, right? I've been at this point, I'm ready to try something and then let's reassess, if it's working, great, if it's not, take it off the list, let's try something different. But I I I think the most important thing that we can do is take action.
Well, and and like you were saying, Joe, too, somebody who actually is working and trying, there's stuff out there, I have eighteen open beds right now. For people that want to be clean, that want to be sober, that want to move their life forward, I mean, I I've had people in them that don't get charged. I've got people in paying very minimal fees, but you know what? I have eighteen beds available, I mean, with all of these people, why do I have eighteen beds available? Like, it's it's, you know, once again, it comes, it's, I'm going to keep beating the same drum, it comes down to enforcing what we can enforce. That's the easiest start, we have things on the books that we're able to enforce that we don't, and I mean, that's that's an instant step that literally we can take tonight. Wait, it doesn't take a million dollars, it doesn't take a group of people to come downtown with gloves and pickup sticks, it 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 takes. Just just jumping out there and I'm done.
Well, and another thing of, and and I'm totally in grants with you, but another thing is, we made the bottom really comfortable here. We've given them all the luxuries, basically, and we leave them alone to do what they want, so. This, so why would they rise to the top when the bottom is comfortable?
Who who made it comfortable? Who's the we in that statement?
So, so let me explain, so uh when they set up the tents in the park and they left their trash everywhere, we kind of let it go for a while. So we didn't have somebody coming in and saying, hey, you got to go, you got to go, you got to clean up your mess, we didn't make it uncomfortable, plus we gave them food. We give them, if they want a sleeping bag, there's a place I'll give them a sleeping bag, if they need clothes, there's organizations that'll give them clothes, they'll give them all these things, but they don't ask for anything in return. They don't say, hey, can you pick up that trash before you have the you the sleeping bag? Can you, you know what I mean, we've we've made the bottom a nice soft cushy place to be without any expectations. And so, uh just like a child, when you tell them to clean their room and they pick up one thing and then they play for the rest of the night, it's comfortable, why would they try harder?
Then the meeting.
Thirty minutes?
Thirty minutes.
I moved to extend the meeting, the meeting for thirty minutes. I second it.
Motion to second, extend this meeting for thirty minutes, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I totally agree with Sharon.
I was.
So what I was going to say off of that is with, if we made it, we don't have to arrest everybody, we don't have to do that. But constantly having the, hey, what are you doing here? By a police presence or somebody in authority, what are you doing here? What is your purpose here? Why are you here? If there's that constant nudge, it's just like the kids on the playground, they go to the back corner because the recess teacher isn't there. But when the recess teacher sees them all the time, is always there, they move, they just first they go somewhere else, okay? So that's just a really simple, broke-down version of how you can make it a little more uncomfortable, you go, you do park at the places that they hang out. You eat the cop car just sits there and that's maybe the where they do their paperwork, you let it be seen that we're not ignoring you, we know that you're there. Because if they think they're not being seen, it's too comfortable for them just to hang out. Okay, I'm done there.
Yeah, I think it shows a lack of. This discussion is showing a lack of our understanding of how diverse the homeless population is and why they're here. That's, I'm going to, I'm going to stop there.
I think that, I think Deputy Mayor, I think we kind of wanted to see if we can give some of these recommendations to the city manager.
There's, there's not necessarily, not necessarily tonight, uh no action or anything tonight, what I more or less wanted to do is plant this. In the minds and just again remind the council that we have yet to actually provide the city manager with council direction. On how to respond to this issue, um and I think it's long overdue. Um and whether we do it through this format or some other, I don't really care, um but it should be a unanimous approach, I'm not going to lie. And we're not unanimous on the approach today, um the second request I had is um. I I would like there to be at least two council members um assigned to working with Mark. Um on this, um if if that's possible, um right now, again, we don't have anybody. Um Eric and I have attended a few meetings, but um there should be probably a council member or two. Um that is interested in taking this on and working this through with the city manager to be able to provide the appropriate input. Um along the way, um that's just a suggestion, again, if it's garbage, throw it out, you're not going to offend me on that, but um. There there should probably be a direct conduit between the council and city manager on this topic as well. So we're not sending people in seven different directions and um in doing that, but just some thoughts to the group. Um, in doing that, but just some thoughts to the group.
I would volunteer for that.
I'll volunteer.
Alright, appreciate.
Wish I had the ability to show up to it.
We certainly, as long as it's not a quorum meeting outside, um, I have a feeling that what I'm hearing today. It's gonna end up back at a council meeting, uh, because the diverging, uh, you know, opinions and responses and whatever action might take place, so. Um, I think that everybody's gonna have a role in this, right, and certainly deserves a role at the council level. Um, so I'm, I'm, I'm comfortable with what everyone else is comfortable with at this point.
I'm willing to do all of it, but we have to do all of it. We're not, we can't just pick one.
Well, you gotta start out.
No, I mean, I I'm fine, let's, 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 let's do it your way, but let's do all of it. You know, and you look like I said, look, we're, this is a bigger problem than just us, we're, we're, this is refugees, these are economic refugees, a bar of capital system.
Because that's just like saying, we need to do every single project that we have on the books now, or we're not gonna do any of them. It doesn't work that way, it'd be nice if just literally we could give everybody a free home and give them. What's that?
It's not in a place to do that.
But that's, but that's just not. It's not even the American way, we're, we're a place where you come and get to build yourself up from nothing, you don't come and get given everything. You have the ability to do anything you want in this country.
You know that.
You still have the ability to do that, I I've not had an address before and gotten jobs, I mean, there's, there's so many things you can do, it it. It's, it's, it's not an excuse that just because.
We can't get back to where you were and start working again.
I understand, I've rebuilt my life three times from nothing.
There are some tragedy that they're under insured, they can't get back to where they were, they're gonna need more services, they're more like. Exceptional foresters than than other than other folks.
Again, we're, we're talking different sets of the community too. The enforcement level isn't on the guy who's trying to go to work, but just doesn't have a place to stay.
Sure.
Is that the guy that's shooting up in the park?
Talking about share. That tents. A good example is over by Hobby Lobby. They came in and swept back, cleaned it out, it is now rebuilt.
Okay, well, hold on, they're putting those people in hotels, so.
Well, there's another camp that just has moved.
Well, I, I, I know, but so they are putting people in hotels.
Yeah, we're kind of talking about root causes here, and I think that, that the ru- root cause needs to be addressed in certain circumstances, right? I mean, if we can address the root cause, we can affect this, we can affect these people, we can affect our community. At the end of the day, though, we have to somewhat address the impacts, right? And that can be a tandem process, right, if we can affect root cause same time as we're, uh, you know, address the impacts, we can certainly do that, we just.
I just wanna make sure that we know that, that they are put them in hotels, and we don't have a hotel, we don't own a hotel, we don't have money.
Lacy was purchased, yeah, DSHS, yeah.
Would it maybe make sense, and again, this is a question of the group, but would it maybe make sense to take these three kind of. Categories that we've got outlined here and have, you know, a couple people work on the public safety and hygiene, and a couple people work on outreach and support, and a couple people work on shelters. Work with the subject matter experts, come back, and then we do a council meeting, full council meeting, kind of report back out, and try to find where there's some common ground, because I think there's some things that overlap. But until the entire council can give Mark direction, eh, we're not going to see movement. Uh, and and there are issues with, you know, public safety and hygiene that are. Separate from the support services side versus looking at locations and and shelter space, so maybe we need to kind of break it down that way.
And for the record, Mark, as Mark started his little manager report that he has, he has started addressing these issues. He has been going down to the park with, with police, fire, uh, staff. You know, DCRs. Crossroads, eh, three times now, so some process has started, it's not like we have done nothing. So we need to build on that, let's, let's, let's build on that. Um, but does anybody have any other suggestions?
Well, if we get commitments towards, you know, from council towards uh, working on some common goals, uh, we can develop. This, you know, this draft plan as we work through it, right, there's gonna be a, oh, I think there's gonna be a more productive time. Um, to work through this, uh, Councilman Peterson's, um, you know, suggestion of splitting this up is fine with me, I I can address it however the council likes. I'm at your disposal, um, if that's, if that means splitting it up or splitting it up into two groups, um. I'm certainly able and willing to do that, uh, we can do it at that point, kind of as a lead, and then. You know, take it from there more, um, more succinctly, I guess, with the, with one group, I. I, I'm, I guess I'm at your disposal. I'm gonna do whatever, uh, whatever appeals to the council at this point, but. I, I, I appreciate it, I really do, because it's, it's, it's a difficult situation for staff, it's a difficult situation for our parks employees. Our public works employees, our police officers, our police officers are in between a rock and a hard place. Yeah, as you know, they have personal liability in situations they deal with, um, out on the streets. And it puts them in a bad position, um, to ask them to do things that may lead to these per- some ramifications personally, right? Because they're dealing with these unknown situations. I have to caution about a civil rights lawsuit, I know, maybe.
I, I understand.
From the cuff, but I have to, I have to caution, we are not protected by insurance there.
I, I understand, but I'm also speaking from a place where not taking action because you're afraid you're gonna get sued is a bad place to be as well. I mean, it's, I'm, I'm not stating that we should go out there and violate people's rights, but we've got some floating rights right now, it's tough, and. And so it, I understand the challenges of it, it's why it's been such a long, hard topic that we. Keep coming back to with literally zero solutions.
Right.
I mean, we've got, we've got two sides, and then there's a very narrow middle, arrest everybody, give everybody a free house, something in the middle, like eh, and. We've got two sides that just are probably not gonna meet in the middle, but what's that middle even look like?
Gotta figure that out.
That's why I jump on to enforce what's enforceable, if we simply do that, we're starting somewhere, and we're starting with something that we have, we have some knowns about. Because we can enforce trespass, and we can enforce drugs, now are prosecutors gonna prosecute drug use and and miniscule?
Literally still legal.
But, yeah, I mean, enforcing what we can enforce is a great start, and like I said, it doesn't take much more.
I, I, I think some education too, because uh, Chief Peterson's really good at explaining. Uh, certain nuances here, because a pizza box can be a possession. Right?
Oh, yeah.
Right, to some of the, I was down there last Thursday, some of the individuals down there, everything around them was a possession, right? They didn't wanna give up, uh, and it took some, it took some communication, and it took some. I wouldn't say coercing, but it's convincing that maybe they didn't need some of this stuff that literally was refuse. Li- literally trash, um, but to somebody living in that situation. Um, they see that as possessions, and there might be a value to that at some point, so we walk by and we see laying on the ground that might be trash. They might see as a possession, and we have to go through a process to help them determine that, if that's the case, and clean up the area. Um, I, you know, spending a couple hours down there on Thursday with some of the individuals that we're working with. With them in the park, um, was, was really eye opening, and I really appreciate the work they do. Also two of them back here in the back, back of the room, right, um, it's. It really is, uh, really was eye opening, it's, it's sad that these folks don't have. Um, more for their lives, there's an individual down there going through a health crisis, sleeping on the ground in the fetal position. EMS came and checked on them, um, had good enough vitals, they couldn't admit them, but that individual just wanted to stay there. Yeah, it's, it's a tough situation, but we need to find some implemental programs and goals that we can try.
And that's not uncommon, and there are people like Community Lifeline who are literally in there waiting to die, because they can't get medical services.
Yeah, so.
Well, let's see, the example that it just gave was they couldn't get it, they refused it.
Yeah.
So.
It's not everybody that does, there are a ton of people.
Yeah, I didn't state that was everyone, I utilized an example that was given.
Yeah.
And, and hospitals will take.
But we have to consider, you know.
And then send you back and then discharge you to your last known address.
We have. We have to consider all of them, right, and we, we have to consider every scenario and every individual in this case, because it's, it's different in every case, right?
That's what I'm trying to say, and it's not an easy, that's the town books, it's not gonna happen.
Understood, so.
I, I just wanna say that I. I try to find every article that I can find on the, on Martin Boise. Oh, and try to circumvent Martin Boise and lost in court. Idaho obviously tried to circumvent it, lost in court, San Diego tried to circumvent it, and lost in court, Grant Pass tried to circumvent it, and lost in court. Martin B. Boise is very clear, if there is no bed, then they can sleep on public right away. Can we clear the park out? Absolutely, do you want them all on railroad? That's, this council can decide to clear Brewer Park out today, and, and they'll all be on railroad in front of the restaurants, the alcoves. The parking lots, the square, where they.
But see, once again, I, I, I refuse to live in the fear of that, if I just don't give people what they want.
I'm not saying that, I'm just saying that, if we want them out of Brewer Park, then that's where they're gonna end up, it's gonna be on the railroad, is that the worst place at this moment in time? No, is it the bed place?
Well, what I'm stating is that they don't, if, if they, if they want to go on the river and we have a bed, and they refuse a bed, we enforce that.
And we did that.
That's what I'm stating, and, and, and the more we do that, of course, of course, if we don't have the bed for them. But then, wh- wh- then, then, then our hands are tied, you can sleep apparently in any right of way you wish. But when we do have the bed and they choose to not take that bed, we start to take enforcement.
Yeah.
Eh, correct, and we've taken enforcement, I believe, so.
Understood.
And for me, I think public, public safety period is the first step, we want all of the individuals in our city, whatever state they're in, to feel safe, and I think that. Maybe that's what we tackle first, is this first section of public safety concerns, and we just start there.
I also wanna remind us, if we clear someone out, where are they gonna go, they're gonna go somewhere else, so maybe they're gonna head up in Aberdeen. So that's Aberdeen's problem, and then we were, we got cleaned for two weeks. I mean, it's, this is just a rotating. This happened at Olympia too, right, if both Hobby Lobby gets cleared out, are some of those folks over here at Brewer Park now? I don't know, saying we're just, we're just rotating folks, and, and until we start doing. More creative things about housing, this is just gonna keep popping up year after year after year.
We're looking at the big, huge financial issues we have with the city, with our pub, with our water and sewer.
And our general fund.
And our general fund, who thinks it's okay to, let's build a motel or a hotel, who's gonna pay for it? That's the thing, who's gonna pay for this shelter?
Yeah, I, I don't think anybody's looking at that coming out of general fund, there's, there's resources available, our, our, our partners in the community, our nonprofits have. The ability to seek those resources, and they've committed to helping uh, seek those resources, so. Um, we'll, we're continuing to have those conversations, active conversations. Uh, with those organizations to help find uh, the ability to provide some of those resources.
So, w- we can look at it a different way, we can look at it backwards, Djar gave us a book, Forty Ways to Kill Your Community, over the. Ten ways, ten ways, sounds like a lot more, the whole thing, anyways, but let's look at it backwards, what happens if we don't do something? What happens if we don't do something, the problem escalates, it grows exponentially, do people wanna buy here anymore? Probably not, do businesses wanna open up down here, probably not, what happens to our tax revenue right now? At that point, it's gone, then we can't do anything if we do nothing. We are in a bigger, we have a bigger problem if we ignore the problem. It's the same conversation we've been having around enforcement, code enforcement, period.
Absolutely.
It's about setting the expectations within our community and connecting people to the resources where we can.
Exactly.
So.
We need to get a data set, right, we, we need data sets here, we need to know who we're dealing with, you know, what we're dealing with, if we're gonna know how to. Address it, right, if that helps, um, it helps us inform decisions, you just saw it with utility rates, it's no different. It isn't, it isn't much different, we need to know what we're dealing with, we need to know the numbers, we need to know who we're addressing, we know how much it costs. We know the manpower it takes, um, we have, um, two police officers on day shift. Um, I talked to one of them down at Community Lifeline for a half hour last Friday and ran out the door to a call. Um, and didn't see him again the rest of the day, because they were running around on calls all day, I think you got the data, about twelve hundred calls in July for our. For our PD, it's, it's significant, right, so, so we need to plan, right, and we need to plan proactively. Need to utilize the resources that are available to us, or we can just seek other resources, and that's why, um, eh, you know. At least a representative, representation of the council is important to work through this.
I think a representation of the council to work on these is a really good thing, because people are coming up to us saying, what are you gonna do?
Constantly.
Constantly, I mean, I go for a cup of coffee or for lunch or something, they're there, what are you gonna do? What do you, well, do you have a, well, no, I said, we don't have a suggestion at this point either, you know. We have to get some, be able to say to their citizens of sheltering, that we have a plan, this is what.
So, did I, so I guess there's two options right now, I heard three, at least three individuals. That are interested, and I heard maybe splitting it up between uh, multiple council members per item, is there a preferred?
I, what I'm at with this is whoever is gonna do this needs to make sure they can invest the time. And be, you know, and be there for this stuff, um, I cannot personally, um. So I'm, I'm happy to put as much effort as I possibly can, but. I, I guess I'm just saying, whatever we choose, whichever direction, it's just, there needs to be some level of commitment on it, and um. Because again, to this point, I believe Sharon just.
And if I can work together with them on this problem, and we're unanimous, that would be. Like what the city needs, because we are probably on the opposite sides of it, and if we can come to an agreement on what, how the city should move forward. I think that would be an excellent opportunity for the city to say, look, we worked it out, and this is what best for the city.
Yeah.
And I'm looking forward to it, and I really wanna talk to Councilmember Sherman, we actually have probably more in common than, than, than differences for, for real.
Uh, is that a good starting point for council?
Does it get you, you need Mark, more than anything, I guess?
I've got, I've got three points of contact here, I can establish a meeting, we can, we can start working towards uh, developing this further. Uh, come to the council, full council with action items. Uh, and suggestions on how to move forward, and we'll dedicate as much time as we can to this over the next. Week or, week or two, uh, in the meantime, we'll continue the activity that we're, that we've been, um. Performing at, at Brewer Park, um, we'll address the claim on this issue. Continue providing uh, opportunities for those to seek services, um, that we will enforce upon those that most need to be enforced upon. Those that are kind of, like I said, that residual activity, those folks that don't need to be there. They've got someplace else to be, they don't need to hang there, they don't need to prey on people, uh, that are vulnerable. And uh, if we can address those issues, um, that solves, um, probably our most underlying. Issue, uh, downtown, right, um, because that tends to grow, it's a fester and grow, so.
And, and the Blake decision fixes August fifteenth, and that's kind of been kind of a needless.
Yeah, I, you know, it's, it's, it's not the, it's not the, it's not the magic wand, right, so, yes.
More.
We, we, it's more forceful, you can cite, you can take people to, to jail based on drug possession, drug use. Uh, the drugs, their paraphernalia still needs to be tested in a lab, right, they. Part of that bill was funding for the state crime, uh, State Patrol Crime Lab to test, um. Drugs or, yeah, paraphernalia, um, I believe it was. Trying to think, forty-five days, sounds, right, is that right, they had, they were committed to that within forty-five days, we'll see if that is reality. But in the meantime, those individuals are held, maybe, you know, if it's a Friday, maybe through the weekend, or maybe twenty-four hours at the same time.
I heard that that's being appealed, that they're fighting on that, no?
I think they're trying to, I think it's going through.
Yeah, that's what I heard the other.
So.
Hopefully, we can work with the county with their new machine that they're buying, and maybe get a little.
That's not, that just, yeah, I don't know if that's admissible, I think it has to be through the crime lab, but I know what you're referring to, it's basically kind of a snapper that tells you what kind of. But, yes, it'll determine what, what that substance is, but it still has to go over time. So, the individuals could go out on the street within relatively short amount of time, but yes. Do they know they're being watched, they know they're being, uh, inserted in the system, do they wanna keep going through that? Do they know they're being watched, they know they're being, uh, inserted in the system, do they wanna keep going through that?
Alright.
Right.
Appreciate everybody's conversation and indulging me on this, so appreciate that, everybody, so thank you.
I appreciate your effort on this, Joe.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Any other items for discussion? I'm gonna extend the meeting for another hour. Alright. And this meeting is during, at eight thirty AM.